Welcome to our first work session regarding our budget for FY '27. I will hand everything over to Dr. McCabe.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon. We've been doing some preliminary work on the FY '27 operating budget through some discussion items at the past two board member, board meetings. Mostly, our focus there has been what we're seeing with enrollment and what that means for state funding. Although, we also began to show the impact that blueprint requirements had on local funding. Today is the first of two budget work sessions scheduled before the calendar year ends. So today, we want to focus on background information, including some historical budget details that impact our work still today. And then, we also want to update you with our early revenue estimates, which we've shared previously. We'd like to illustrate our comparative per pupil funding and the challenge it presents us. And then finally, next, we will show you how to or, how we organize and spend the operating budget, both by major category and by blueprint programs. As we look to the December work session, that would be the time when we would have our best estimates for revenues and expenditures and have discussion on any potential reductions that we foresee. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Oh. Yeah, one more thing. As we begin with some historical information, I wanted to take the time to go into detail on the budget cuts that we've made between FY '09 and FY '19. And so, our audience will have to be patient for this portion of the presentation because I'm going to go into detail rather than just saying that we've cut $40 million over the past decade, decade and a half. So, it's been many years, and not everyone was involved for all of those years. And it's easy not to understand the impact that $40 million in cuts had on this organization. Also, we sometimes hear, "You just need to cut some things." Or, in the alternative, "Why are you planning to cut this thing?" Well, that's because we already cut so many other things in those prior years that there aren't any more easy or good choices. Those are long gone. I asked staff to go through the arduous task of recreating the list of cuts year by year for that decade. And I ask that you'll indulge me for a few minutes as I take the time to go through it. So, starting in FY '09, you'll notice as I go through this by FTE and program, that every department in CCPS has been touched over that time and has felt the results of, of the cuts that we've had to make. So, starting in FY '09, we cut the community learning centers. In FY '10, for FTE, we cut 10 teacher positions, three high school assistant principal positions, six central office positions. And the programs we cut were community learning centers and central office budget cuts. For FY '11, for FTE, 38 central office, 19 teacher. And for program, we saved money in our maintenance budget. Our central office budgets were cut. We reduced site-based substitutes in schools. We reduced specific work years. In FY '12, for FTE, we cut 10 teachers, three and a half media clerks, one and a half ILA specialists, which are now ELA specialists, 1.0 crisis counselors, one media specialist, nine floater custodians, 4.1 central office administrators, four government HSA teachers, three central office clericals, one kindergarten assistant, one bus driver. And for programs, we saved money in utilities that year and didn't add that back into the budget. We saved money through hiring turnover. We saved money through chance, for the transportation fuel budget. And we cut materials, supplies, and equipment. We also cut one day from the case duty year. We cut our education foundation that we had, and we made some other salary adjustments. In FY '13, we enacted a transportation efficiency plan. Some of you might remember that. We also cut 15 teachers, 16.5 clerical staff, 4.5 central office administrators, 5.5 instructional assistants, one PPW, two bus assistants, one school counselor. We also had higher, hiring turnover that year. We reduced our fiber network funding. We did work year reductions, and we enacted paperless payroll. In FY '14, we also benefited from hiring turnover financially. And then, we cut 20.5 custodians, 15 teachers. We also did, we, four HSA FTE, one construction project manager, two for our television station, one for our coordinator of service learning. We lost our hourly recess monitors, and we used fund balance. We also reduced the case duty year by one day. In FY '15, we again reduced by 15 teachers, two duty center staff, 2.4 media specialist, five school clerical, one director of, of HS, one construction project manager. And for programs, we reduced computer replacement, textbooks, materials, and supplies. We cut our interpreter program. We had hiring turnover, and we had some savings in utilities, so we cut that money from our budget for the next year. In FY '16, we had 55.2 FTE that we saved through our school closures, and then 10 teachers on top of that. We saved that, that year $5 million, which included the savings for building costs. In FY '17, we, we cut 50 teacher positions, and we had a retirement incentive in order to do that. We cut six from the student services program, 1.5 outdoor school assistance. That year, we also had hiring turnover that we benefited from, as well as we reduced our hourly funding. In FY '18, we cut 15 teachers. We had hiring turnover and we, and cuts in utilities once again, and then just other general spending that we were able to eliminate. In FY '19, we cut 21 teachers, five central office clericals, one purchasing buyer, one print shop employee because we closed our print shop. We also had hiring turnover, and we reduced multiple central accounts. And then finally, we had fund balance to use for our Johnson Controls performance contract that saved us money. So, over that decade, from '09 to '19, that's a listing of everything that we cut. So, as I said previously, there are no easy cuts anymore. Everything that we need to cut in order to balance our budget is going to hurt. Not that these did not hurt, all of these hurt. These are all people, these are all positions, these are all programs that we benefited from, that our students and our staff benefited from. But the things that will be on the table now will be even closer to the hearts of, of our staff, our community, and our students. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. O'Neil.
All right. And there's sort of a compounding effect, I would say. So, as we ponder decisions today, or if you think back to last year when we were at the budget time, I remember there was a public speaker who came, and, and this isn't just single anybody out just for the sake of an example. And that particular public speaker who didn't like the proposed reductions that, that the superintendent offered that year said, one of the things that person said was, "Well, what about instructional assistance? Have you ever looked at that?" Well, we look at everything. But if you go back to these years, and Dr. McCabe kind of went through line by line, we cut many assistants. We also cut our recess monitors, which used to be sort of like hourly staff we had to cover resource. So, today, when we look at assistants, there's no wiggle room. Without the assistants we have, we, we, we can't sort of cover the school day, the duties and recess, especially, you know, at the elementary level. So, this history matters, I guess, is, is the point I'm trying to make. We, the board's familiar that in the last couple of years, we, we've made changes to how we, how we're going to handle utilities. And not too long ago, we did a, a bid for the first time in five years on electric, and we met with the inflation in the market. And that's fine. We, we knew that was coming. But when you look back, we also spent a lot of years, anytime we found savings in utilities, we cut that out of the budget. And so, we've, we've, you know, over the years, we've taken away sort of our wiggle room, or our ability to adjust to, to changes on a daily basis. I'll ask Ms. Bowers to go ahead and, and load the next chart. And I won't, I won't make you go back and forth between slides just to get through the charts. This next chart, which will be extraordinarily hard for anyone in the audience to see, but you all have a copy, that if you squint, I think you can see it. And I guess we can make these available to the public if they want them. This, this chart sort of looks at the funding year over year, over, well, a longer period of time, but certainly all the years that Dr. McCabe just covered. So, it starts in fiscal seven and ends this year. The very top section looks at enrollment and how enrollment changed from one year to the subsequent year. And these, these, these representations are, are all of total enrollment. Now, we know that in more recent years, kind of different kinds of enrollment matter under blueprint, but, but for the sake of consistency across years before blueprint, this is just the total enrollment. And you can see that from fiscal eight on for many, many years, our enrollment was going down. And we'll talk a little bit about what that means for funding in those years because we're seeing a repeat of that, at least for this year, and a little bit trending that way last year. So, you could see the enrollment, you could see the years that it went down. I think ultimately, that going down totaled almost 4,000 students. And then, you can see the state funding in the, kind of the middle section. And state funding, as you know, is formula-driven, based on the number of students. In the pre-blueprint years, it was sort of an aggregate of students. And so, you can see in the red parentheses, which is also on the screen, for many years, as enrollment decline caught up to us, we were actually losing state funding, not a, not a, we were hoping to get this much more state funding, but we didn't get that much more. A literal loss in state aid from one year to the next. There was eventually, well, there were a couple of places where there was a hold harmless built into legislation so that the state began to eventually hold us flat, at least, even though our actual enrollments were down. You can see some of those changes throughout. But for many years, we were losing state aid and turning to the county to try to help us pay our bills, help us meet our priorities, and try to help us make up for a reduction in state aid. If you were to tally for the state line, all of those numbers that are in the red parentheses that were reductions, it would be over $16 million of a decline in state aid in those years. And then, at the bottom, you can see local funding in different representations. You see the actual funding, the dollar amount change from the prior fiscal year. What maintenance of effort would have been in that given year? Maintenance of effort, of course, being the legal floor by which the county government must fund us. And then, the, the difference to maintenance of effort, meaning did the county fund us at maintenance of effort or above in any given years? And you can see that there was only one instance in this timeline where the county did hold us to maintenance of effort. There, there's a second year in '21, but that was sort of by mutual decision. That was the, the year of the pandemic first breaking onto the scene, and, and no one was really sure what was going to happen in the county or the world. And so, by mutual agreement, the Board of Ed and the Board of Commissioners kind of made that arrangement. But, sort of the long and short of it is that, you know, the county government wasn't able to make up for all of those things. The decline in state funding, cost of doing business, inflation, and any desire to give employee compensation in any of those years. And if you, if you were to go ahead and take the next handout, which, which I'll ask Brenda to pause on for a minute, but if you were to take the next handout and sort of do an overlay, those early years of fiscal 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16, those were the years that we didn't award an annual increase, what we call a step or an interval increase to any of our employee groups. And in most of those years, there was also no cost of living increase applied to the salary scales either in six of those seven years. In fiscal 16, there was no annual step that year, but with the closure of the three schools and the $5 million in savings that that brought, we were able for the first time to give our employees 2.5% COLA. And then, in the years 17 and after, we were able to, with, with the exception of '21, fiscal '21, to get on a bit more of a pattern of at least awarding an annual step and some amount of cost of living increase to the salary scales. It, it ranged from, it was two for, for several years. No COLA in fiscal '21, 1.75 in fiscal '22, 2.5 in fiscal '23, and 4% in '24, and then in '25. And, and the current year, we got into some of the blueprint movements on the career ladder salary scale and that sort of thing. In the year we're sitting in, we were able to award a step increment at, the, the step increment for employees will be effective March 1st of this fiscal year, which means it will show up in the employee's paycheck for the first time in their March 15th pay. That would be the first pay period where that, where that deferred increment shows up. So, you know, as we think about what, what we may face this year or into the future, especially if enrollment decline is, is going to become a norm again, you know, those things Dr. McCabe went through were one part of it. We, we cut things to stay open and pay bills. And in most cases, even if the county was funding us slightly, we weren't able to then also do much at all with employee compensation. There really, there really aren't any years where we were able to do something meaningful if, and I get that that's subjective and others might disagree, but meaningful in terms of both the annual increment and some type of cost of living on the scales, where we don't have to rely on the, the local funding authority to fund us at a higher level than perhaps they anticipated. That, that just is the history, and that's, I think, pre-blueprint, and that will continue to be the case after blueprint. I read them, so I, I don't think I'm going to ma, make Ms. Bowers put the, put the next chart on the screen. If you can go back to the PowerPoint. I got Brenda working two jobs over there today. I think that's it, unless the board wants to refer to things later. We'll, we'll stay here now. So, the last thing in terms of background that we'll do before, before Mr. Burke takes over kind of the nuts and bolts of what we're looking at for fiscal '27, this is something you've seen before, we've shared before publicly. Normally, I show the actual document from the Department of Legislative Services, who, who tend to do comparisons like this of all kinds each year. Unfortunately, fiscal '25, or the prior fiscal year, is still the most recent version from the Department of Legislative Services. Hopefully, by the time we get into the January budget timeline, we might get an update from them, and, and perhaps it's changed somewhat. But this is, this is the DLS data, but I converted it to, to, to a chart of my own so that I could then rank the, you know, rank the columns independently. And what this shows is every of the 24 school systems in Maryland, and where those school systems rank in terms of per pupil funding from the state, per pupil funding at the local level, and then the aggregate or the combined total per pupil. At the state, as you know, the state uses a funding formula. One aspect of that funding formula is that it is what the state calls wealth equalized, meaning they take the 24 counties assessable tax bases, they, bases, I guess, they divide that, that total tax base by the number of students, and then they rank them 1 through 24, although in this display, it kind of would work backwards, like 24 would be wealthiest and 1 would be least wealthy. And they fund you on a percentage based on that wealth ranking. And so, you can see where, where we would fall in, in that line. And then, the, the second half that starts with the row, the column labeled local, that's, that's what your local government funding is on a per pupil basis, and where we would rank in terms of those dollar amounts. And then, off to the far right is, is the total. And we highlighted Carol. And so, this, this is a challenge. It's part of, part of the backdrop of all of this work. We are by per pupil the lowest funded school system in the state, and so, it, it does make working through some of these challenges more pronounced. It especially makes it more daunting when enrollment is moving in the wrong direction because that puts more pressure on the state, and, and in turn, it, then it puts more pressure on, on the local level as well. So, I, if we didn't say it, we're open to questions or comments at any point. We're also happy to sort of plow through this, and then, when we get to the end, entertain any, any thoughts or discussion. But Mr. Burke will now-
If I can, if I can just make a comment, just for the public watching at home. Again, if you look at the local column towards the middle of the chart there, Carol, our local government is ranking 10th out of the 24 as far as contributing to our education. And it's, it's, it's a shame that we rank lowest overall in the state. And we still rank 10th, even though our commissioners have given nearly $135 million over what they're required to over the last 20 years. So, you know, I, I do want to thank our commissioners for giving what they have because if they had not given us that $135 million over a 20-year period more than they were supposed to, we would be at about $17,000 per pupil funding. So, just to give the public a perspective. But, yeah, it's just, we need to do more with the state because right now, we rank 17th out of 24 as far as state funding. And so, that really is the thing holding us back. If we get more state funding, that would be helpful. But again, just for the folks looking at home, sometimes you get keyed in on that far-right column saying we're the lowest per pupil funded. But I'm not sure if the, the anger should be directed at our commissioners, but instead it should be directed at the state. Thanks.
Yeah. And that's a, that's a fair point, Mr. Whistler. The, the challenge is the state funds to a formula written in the law, and, and, and the county has the flexibility that the state doesn't have. They're, they're only going to fund to their formula. And, you know, I'd like to see, hope that they might reconsider the formula. I'd especially like to see some hope that they would reconsider what a change in enrollment would mean for not just us, but a lot of counties in Maryland. I think we mentioned that at the last couple of board meetings. We're not the only county this time seeing a, a decline in enrollment. And for many of those terrible years that Dr. McCabe stepped through, it was kind of just us and Garrett and Kent County. Now, it's some of the bigger counties. But I also am not too optimistic that in, in this session, they'll take that up. I'd be a little bit surprised if they'd look to change the, the funding formula for the state.
I doubt it.
Yep. And John, you said, in terms of the state and the funding, it's mainly, you know, in terms of wealth index, they're looking at that. Are there any other factors beside that as they do these calculations?
For overall funding, or what we call the foundation, well, really for all funding, but especially for foundation, they, it's just wealth equalized based on, and it's part of their formula again. Because I, sometimes I've heard people say, "Well, the formula's flawed because if you consider this one thing," in Carol's case, "that's not currently part of the methodology, then that would help us." But I guess, like, to try to be fair to the state, they have to apply some same standard to everyone. This is the standard they have for everything we would come up with, that we would say, "If you would add that in, it would help Carol." There's another county who could say, "Well, but if you would add this in, it would help us, and it, and it wouldn't help Carol." They, it's, Dr. Malvo, it's always a little more complex perhaps than the way John O'Neil describes it, but in essence, they take your income tax base and your real property base, combine those two tax bases, combine those two tax base numbers, and divide it by your, your number of students. And then, they, they rank you based on, on that formula. Yeah. Okay. Mr. Burke?
Okay. So, all right, so move into the FY '27 revenue outlook. We know that the Carroll County government adopted in their most recent budget for fiscal year '26, they adopt an operating plan. That plan shows us their intended funding for fiscal year '27 at about 3% increase, $7.6 million. So, you know, a starting point for us to work from. State revenues, as we've mentioned, there's, there's parts we're starting to see, but more to come. We're continuing to finalize our understanding of our enrollment numbers. And more importantly, I think the state, as they head into legislative session, the governor's budget will be released by January 21st by law. And so, you know, any impact of the state's projected structural deficit, any other changes that the legislature or governor would include, we would, we would know around that time. So, this is a, you know, still an unknown on the state side. Showed this slide, I think, at our last board meeting, that, just to remind, and we've kind of hit on it here, that we've moved into the period where it's, it's not as simple as just saying that's the local funding number. The, the local funding, you know, they may not break it out to us this way, but with the blueprint and the, the local shares, you know, each program has a revenue, you know, associated with it, both on the local side and the state side. This was the adopted fiscal year '26 budget.
Rob, while you're there-
Sure.
This, I think Rob just said this. This is a snapshot from the board's budget book. So, for anyone in, in the public who, who might want to know more and try to unpack this a little bit more for themselves, no, no sane person would necessarily want to try to read the entire budget book from cover to cover. But some of the graphic depictions in the beginning, the charts and graphs are pretty helpful. This is page 18 for anyone who would, you know, want to find the budget book online and take a look at it. And I think, and did we start this in '25, Drew, or '26?
'26. So, this is the first year of us saying, "We need to show more than just the major categories," which I think you'll see in a second, "but we need to show both local funding and state funding by the defined blueprint programs." And we'll, we'll come back to this more, not only today, but as we move through the budget process. Also, would like to introduce for the board and anyone else, Mr. Drew Sexton, sitting at the first row back there. Drew is now embarrassed, but Drew is our supervisor of budget in Rob's office. One of two or three, depending on how you want to treat grants. Rob, Drew, and one other person, if you want to treat grants as part of that, is pretty much, or two other people would be our entire staff. And so, Ms. Sexton's been with us a long time, doing a lot of good quality work for us for many, many years. And in recent years, we've doubled his job by handing him all of the blueprint, you know, fiscal compliance or resource allocation and accountability. But a little, a stinking me, a little bit of recognition and acknowledgement of him.
So, broken down there as it was for fiscal year '26, showing basically the same information here in a slightly different format to be able to show the state share and local share or what we, and then what we call combined shares. This is what blueprint compliance is based on. And so, with our waiver and our efforts with our consultant to continue to reach compliance toward our blueprint spending by these categories here, the, the, there are, there's more. These are the most significant ones. There's some, some smaller ones as well.
And here's where there's some pressure. This is one of the ways in which there's a little bit of pressure locally from the blueprint. So, there's, there's whole, you know, there's broad aspects of running the school system or any school system in Maryland that the blueprint really doesn't account for. Because in the state's view, they would sort of say, "If it's not one of those special programs," and Rob mentioned, "There's a couple more we don't show that are very small dollar amounts, then it's all just in your foundation." But the problem with that is there's not enough money in the foundation to run all of those other things, that the blueprint doesn't spend a ton of time- that the blueprint doesn't spend a ton of time focused on. And those would be things like pupil transportation, maintenance and operation of the facilities. Really with the exception of the career ladder add-ons, compensation for any employee groups. There's not, there's not a specific stream of blueprint funding for any of those things. Pension and other fixed charges. And so, and this is a conversation Mr. Zaleski and I have been having a bit lately in the last year or so, especially since Ted served on our local fiscal work group. You know, a county is responsible legally for, for as a minimum, funding a school system at either maintenance of effort now or with blueprint, the combined local shares, whichever of those two numbers is greatest. So in Carroll County's case, and in a lot of counties' cases, that's the maintenance of effort number. But it's, you know, but to have a really meaningful conversation locally, it's not quite that simple anymore. Because depending on how the enrollments, even the, the special groups of enrollment show up. Yeah, they, yeah, they have to fund you at above or at least maintenance of effort. But we have to then account for that money by these programs. And so like last year, we had a year where overall enrollment stayed basically flat, but compensatory ed enrollment and some others went up. So that going up in those programs also meant the local share went up. And so legally, that's not an issue for the county. They don't have to really worry about how they're funding us. They're meeting their, their statutory requirement. But we have to move some of that money into those programs, which means there's less local money available in general for all of those things that are assumed to just be covered by the foundation.
And can I just add-
Yes, ma'am.
-prior to the waiver? We've always given the response, you know, use your foundation, put that money in your foundation to do whatever else you need to do to run the system. So I just wanted to point that out, that again, that waiver certainly has been helpful in that regard.
We're using the foundation and more to run the system. And correct, Dr. Dorsey, I agree with you. And, and you know, what I've been, like the conversation Ms. Zaleski and I sometimes have is, so if we ask for a certain amount of money and then we say, but we need some money for this, you know, don't forget that, that the way this works, we're having to now compartmentalize or shifts, you know, designated amounts of local funding in certain areas. So, you know, the commissioners don't need to necessarily. I mean, it'd be nice if they did and worked, you know, thought through it with us. But they don't really have to think through it that way. But we legally have to work through it that way. And, and so it is putting a little pressure locally. And until we can get to the point where we're fully compliant under blueprint with where the money's being spent in these programs at the school level, you know, there is some pressure to sort through there. And it'll show up when Rob moves into the, you know, the anticipated revenue amounts by these programs, which is probably where you're-
I would just add here that one, one thing for people to keep in mind is that oftentimes people assume that we got a lot more money for blueprint. But really, what happened with blueprint is, you know, before blueprint, we were, our funding was based on Thornton, the Thornton funding model, where basically we had an aggregate amount of, of funding. And from that, we could decide, okay, how much are we going to spend on transportation? How much are we going to spend for ML? You know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But with blueprint, we, we weren't given a whole lot more money. It was kind of the same pot of money. But the difference with blueprint is we're told how we need to spend it in all of these categories. And we're still, we still have to run the school system with what's left. And as we're saying, it, what's left is not enough to run the school system. So that's really the, the issue that we've had with blueprint.
Yeah. And you, you raise a good point about the waiver, Dr. Dorsey. At the December business meeting, December 10th, 12th, 10th? I think we will get back into that. And then I think in January, we'll really get into that work. And again, you know, try to give credit where credit's due. The work since the waiver with the AIB and their consultants has been better than we could have asked for. And I do mean that. And where we sit with them now, and we hope to be able to begin to unveil this December and then really in detail in January. What we, what we were facing last spring is not our reality any longer. So we don't anticipate the level of reductions that we were thinking about, nowhere even near that scale. They, they've spent months now working with us on sort of an accounting methodology to, to think about the funding of schools differently. And so the accounting aspect of it sort of will help make the staffing aspect of it a lot, lot better than where we were in April, May. There will still be changes to come, you know, and I'll keep trying to say that. But the cha, the level of change does not appear to be anything remotely close to where we were back in the spring of last year. And that's difficult because there, there's the two conversations that are clearly related, but they're, at least to the way I think, they're not the same. Like building your budget and how much total revenue you have and what your expenditures are and what your priorities are, is a process that's always happened and continues to happen. That part of blueprint is a little bit less about how much total money you get, but where are you spending your money? And so it is a budget exercise, but it's not, it's not a building your budget exercise. It's less about how much money and more about how do you spend that money? But the outlook is way better than it was a, you know, at less than a year ago or a year ago. So that's some good news to come. We've blown up Rob's rhythm here.
Oh, we're good.
I just have a quick question. Mr. O'Neill, just circling back to what you just said, and, and it might be too early to say, but can you tell us if this year is going to look similar to last year in that we're going to be presented with the operating budget and then also with blueprint outcomes or potential outcomes?
Yeah, I don't, the timing is such that I don't know how to avoid that. You know, Dr. McCabe's been very careful directing me to say, like today, try to make this about the operating budget and not so much about blueprint. And so there aren't overlapping slides there, but the timeline is going to be parallel. So, you know, we'll have a, a budget discussion on the December agenda and we'll have a preliminary look at the APA consulting work at the December agenda. You'll get your, your proposed budget from the superintendent in January. And we'll probably have a much more detailed discussion in January where, where it probably is better this year than last year. And, and don't get me wrong, like I'm well aware that I'm explaining things to people. I'm trying to explain things to people, usually unsuccessfully, that it takes me hours to get my head around. But it's my job, I have, you know, it's arcane and it's hard to sort of sort out. The, the good news is unlike last year, while we're trying to build a successful operating budget, I don't think we'll also be talking about cutting so many things as we were with blue, blueprint last year. Cause it got really confusing last year. This is an operating budget cut. But this is not an operating budget cut, it's a cut because of blueprint. A lot of that blueprint cutting won't, at the level we were planning, won't happen at all. And I'm not really sure how much of it would happen in fiscal '27 versus fiscal '28. So by degree, it should be a lot better. But people will continue to be confused by all of this and rightfully so, I think. And we'll, we'll keep trying to get better at trying to explain it, Drew.
Okay. So this is a snapshot of the fiscal year '27 estimated state revenue side. So focusing on the state, the same programs, so pretty much the same breakdown for fiscal year '26. What we're projecting for fiscal year '27, I think we showed this last month. This is updated slightly as enrollments have become more, more accurate, more, more official. So updated with enrollments. Most of them were, were fairly small adjustments. I'll point out the college and career ready, what we refer to as CCR. Last month, you'll recall, had a big decrease. And I was saying, we need to look more into that. That was an outlier. Once we did dug in deeper, there is a slight uptick in that enrollment. And so that revenue will be fairly flat, but, but not the reduction we were, we were looking at last year, I don't think. So again, this is still a little dependent on, certainly on the state funding at the formula level that they have, that we're currently working with. So these are updated for current enrollment. What they're not updated for yet is the, is the wealth equalization. So what we talked about, how they do that. This is, this is sort of fiscal year '27 revenue projection with still fiscal year '26 wealth data. We won't have that until further, closer to the governor's budget.
And, and that's a big one, because that could mean if, if our relative wealth went up, the foundation number, which is the, the money from the state that you have greater flexibility with how to spend, you know, that could lower just based on wealth equalization, or they all could, but that one especially. The other thing, we showed this or an earlier version at the last board meeting. Just also bear in mind that it's not always exactly how it seems. It depends on what's going on in each one of these programs. So if you see a positive number, you, you might instinctively say, well, that's great, that's more money. It depends on how you, how you want to look at each program. So for instance, special ed going up by 1.7 million projected, it has a lot to do with the form, the, the multiplier for special ed students in the formula at the state. That would generally, in my mind, be a good thing. Because I think we've shared over time, we spend more money on special ed than the, not, not than students need, but than the, than the blueprint as a formula says we were required to, which means we're spending some other money on special ed beyond just the spec, you know, just special ed funds. So if that number goes up in a good, that's a good thing perhaps, and it can take a little pressure off elsewhere, perhaps. But like print pre-kindergarten, that number going up, which is clearly a direct result of what the formula's doing at the state next year, not necessarily as good news for us. Because we had just sort of worked our way to where we were either there, pretty close to compliant under blueprint and pre-K. But when they changed that formula to a positive, that might be a, a million three that we have to look for elsewhere. Back to that kind of conversation about, just because the county government gives us a whole dollar amount, doesn't mean we don't have to fit it into all the right places. And that's where the pressure can kind of build. So it's not always as simple as, more money's a good thing. It, I mean, it sounds silly, but it's more complicated than that, I guess.
And is the pre-K, the impact, the increase have to do also with construction? And is blueprint driving that, that we have to have a certain number of pre-K facilities that we didn't have the previous year?
So not in this example. So, you know, construction's the capital budget and there, there are monies there. This is this year's fall enrollment of pre-K students, so the existing number, regardless of what we're planning to build. But the state per pupil for pre-K went up by like 9,000, it went up, it went up enormously. It went from Drew's estimating, like the, the, the this year per pupil would have been for pre-K, 13,000 or 14,000. It goes up to 19,000 next year. So this is just known students times that, that number. But suddenly we might be 1.3 million out of compliance, whereas we had kind of clawed our way to compliance in the last few years.
Mr. Whistler?
Yeah, I appreciate it. A couple of questions. Any of these costs, I'm concerned about the 60-40 split, the implementation and the mandate of that. I know last year, they paused 60-40. I'm not sure if they're going to do that again this year. And they, of course, as you know, last year, they said they were going to pause it, but they still gave us the money anyway. Any insight into that? And do these numbers kind of reflect that if they make us go back to the 60-40 and implement?
So they, they paused it till fiscal '29, and I believe they'll leave it stick there. I mean, we haven't said it, but this is an election cycle, which is one of the reasons we wouldn't anticipate they would make wholesale changes. I, I believe that they will leave it, leave it paused until '29, at least through this session. And you're right, they did sort of hold it harmless in the foundation for the current year. But they adjusted the formulas-
Right.
In '27 and '28 and '29, or I guess it would come back in '29. And it's not just foundation, they adjusted, like we, we believe at least, I think that they've adjusted some of the other.
They actually hardcoded some of the others instead of being a percentage to protect-
Ah, that's right. That's what they did. And I don't know whether that's worth admitting or not. The original blueprint law had the foundation amount, which was hardcoded. It was a dollar amount per year for 10 years. And then all of the program areas were a percentage thereof. Special ed might be 100%, and comp ed might be 80%, and ML might be 101%. They changed that and now all of the numbers are hardcoded. The foundation number is a hu, a hardcoded dollar amount, so is special ed, so is ML, so is comp ed in the law. But, but, but we're not certain that they didn't adjust some of those numbers down in the next two fiscal years to equate to them not pushing the, the 60-40 time mandate forward. And by the way, the 60-40 time issue as a function of state funding is interesting because they, there's a couple of areas, that being one of them. College and career ready being another. Career counseling with the local workforce development board being another one, where the state has sort of carved out set amounts of dollars from the foundation. So they're pinching the foundation that way as well. They're saying, you know, here's the foundation, 9,800 or whatever per kid. But X amount of that goes to this and Y amount of that goes to that and Z amount of that goes to this other program. So there, it, it's like kind of a, they're kind of coming at it from both sides there.
And the, another point I wanted to ask, I see the multilingual learner bucket going down. And I'm curious if we see a growing population in our county with multi-language learners. Is it going up, down, staying the same? Any idea?
We had been, do you have exact-
We have a decrease of about 52 students from, from last year to this year. Now, that's the first year, and I would say on average, a five-year window of small increases year to year. But this is the first year of a, of a decrease of about 50 students.
That's good news then. And then the, the last thing I want to ask about, you know, you mentioned, and again, it's, it's a really crazy word to say, but we're spending 18 million more on special ed than we're required to. Cause again, these kids have needs and we, we need to meet those needs. But then we have like a $40 million hole in comp ed. I think a discussion we need to have, and not today obviously, but going forward, is, you know, to meet these blueprint mandates with what we've got. You know, do we need to look at moving money around and resources around? Or has the APA helped us in re-characterizing and re-categorizing some special needs educators we have and giving that credit into the comp ed bucket? Can you kind of give insight into that?
Yeah. So the short answer is yes, to an extent. I've been, I've been wondering for a long time how, beginning at the December board meeting and thereafter, I'm going to begin to explain this to people in the public, but, and it's going to be really hard without visuals. But the APA approach is more of an accounting methodology as opposed to ours, which was more of a staffing resource methodology. And, and basically they have a methodology at every level where they say, this formula of staff will be the base model for that level. And that formula of staff at that level will be used to come up with the foundation number at the school, for a school, for an elementary school, for a middle school. And then anything above that foundation number can be coded to the other programs. Whether or not, and this is sort of the, I guess philosophical difference, although that sounds different than I mean it. The difference of approach than, than our local approach, which was more about, we felt like someday we were going to have to show precise resources being served on precise students. And, and that's not their approach. It's more of, here's a formula or a methodology to get to a foundation amount for that school. And then beyond that foundation amount, existing resources can be charged to these other programs. So that's a big help right there. That's, that's how you get away from the, the number of cuts we were looking at. Beyond that, there's a provision, and this was pre, this has been in blueprint from its inaction. There's a provision that says if you spend over in special ed, above the combined shares in special ed, then you, you can legitimately charge other program funds to, to cover that. Comp ed and ML specifically. But there's, where we, our work is still ongoing with them. I don't want you to think it's wrapped up, we're still final, they're, they're finalizing a lot of things. But then it gets into questions of, there's method, methodology to be still sort of fine-tuned there too. At what level? Cause another provision in blueprint is that you don't have to report special ed at the school level like you do the other categories. You can choose to report it centrally, which would probably make Drew smile a little bit, less workload perhaps for him. a little bit less workload perhaps for him. But if you're gonna charge some comp ed funding to, to, to the special ed coverage or overage, how does that look? How do you make that decision? Which special ed funding from which school for which reason? There's a lot of those details still being sorted out. But yes, there is, there is some relief in this work. This, this work has been, has been valuable. It's been effective. It's been collaborative. It's been worth it. And I have, and I think Nick, others would agree, have nothing bad to say about the work that has happened with our consultants since the waiver.
I just, I just would hate to see us, cause again, the argument's gonna be, well, if you're overspending in one category, why don't you just move it into the other? But we just, I would just hate to see us move any resources we have at say Winfield or Hampstead, Hampstead Elementary or, um, or, you know, Carol Springs, for example, you know, those schools need those resources for those special needs cases.
Right, and, and as well, you know, those services are based on the student's IEP, you know, which is a legally binding document. So we would, we would, you know, I, we wouldn't have the option to just move, move funding out of that category to another category, um, you know, since that, that's a legal issue for, for students.
Yeah, and these are the kinds of things that we need flexibility and revisions in the, in the, in the blueprint law. Because we're not the only county going through this. I've talked with colleagues in other counties and they're experiencing the same issue.
I, I strongly suspect that they might push out the methodology they're working on with us, not necessarily as a mandate, but an opportunity for other counties. And I, I'll say all this at the December meeting when we do this as well. But I, I'll also say that, I mean, you know, we got the waiver. We have to do what they say. We're sort of at their mercy, if you will. But they showed up here and have appeared consistently from day one, genuinely interested in what we were saying. Genuinely concerned with the challenges that we were describing and a, a real willingness not to just sort of say, here's the methodology you'll use. But we, we wanna, we wanna know what it is you're saying. Like, we wanna understand what, what you're describing. And they're not changing the blueprint law because of us, but I do feel like we've been heard and that they've, um, you know, within their methodology, they have sought to find some flexibility, uh, that we can work within. And so, you know, I really, I don't have any bad things to say about that process. I'm actually kind of excited to start to get to where we can roll that out. I think I used to say at Dr. McCabe's town halls, if someone from the state will show up and tell me how very wrong I am, I'll be the first to run around Carroll County and proclaim it. And I'm prepared to start to do that on December tenth.
Right, it's other things too, like, you know, why can't we use the money we use in foundation for our media specialists, our reading specialists, math specialists? Why can't some of that money be credited towards comp ed if they're in those schools that have high cases of poverty and high need? But it just seems like the state's really, um, tying us down with this comp ed number.
Those are further good examples. There's good news on that horizon coming up.
It's just, that, those are the kinds of things we need revised in the law. And we need the waiver, not just to be for Carroll, but for all systems statewide. Um, but it's, it's, it's a challenging thing. And hopefully APA can be an advocate for us down there at MSD and, and in the state legislature with some of their recommendations.
Yeah, I honestly, I think, I don't know that they would describe themselves as advocates, but I would think that they would openly say, they learned a lot about local practice. We learned a lot about their, what they call it, theory of action, and it's been a good collaboration, so it's been positive.
Yeah, but I'm just glad that they see that, you know, yes, we use foundation for math specialists, reading specialists, and we can't cut them. We can't just cut them to use that money, you know, for comp ed services in those schools. They, they matter too, so.
If, if Mr. Shokni and I are able to satisfactorily explain this starting on December tenth, I think you'll be fairly happy with, with where that work has gone. It's hitting on a lot of the things you're, you're describing right now.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna turn from the revenue side to starting to look at the, the cost side, looking at preliminary expenditures for fiscal year twenty seven. Again, we'll be back at the December work session to start to put some, some numbers and some, some more detail to this. But just in general, some of the cost pressures we're seeing, uh, continue to see inflationary impact in several major categories, utilities, uh, insurance and employee benefits. So rising costs there that we're either anticipating or continuing to adjust to catch up to, uh, costs as, as we're seeing them through the current year. So, um, you know, this has been, over the last several years, a big driver. Um, a big item that we've talked about heading into next school year would be, uh, implementation of a charter school. So the, the opening costs, um, it's the biggest impact to us would be in that year one. Uh, the charter school that's, that, that we've approved application for, uh, ramps up, uh, their enrollment over a sort of a three-year starting. So they go through sixth and at a seventh and an eighth grade. So over, over the next three years, we'd see some, some impact and some, uh, cost pressure there as well. So, uh, adjusting to that, um, we'll know more, you know, as we get closer. Technology and student devices continues to be an area of, of challenge. Um, again, we've talked about it, a large, uh, cost that, uh, historically hasn't been built into our budget that we're continuing to adjust to. And then last, as, as, uh, as always, you know, uh, this year we're facing, uh, all contracts open for salary negotiations. So, um, you know, where will that lead? What flexibility do we have? How do we make balance the revenue side that we're talking about with, with the cost pressures that we'll see here? So, um, stay tuned, more, more to come on that. Uh, this is obviously, you know, the big driver of the budget, but, uh, we'll get more into that in December, so, yes, sir.
Uh, this is basic, but with technology, student device replacement being a big cost, um, but don't the parents and the families have to replace damaged screens and, uh, equipment that's lost, that sort of thing? So where, where is that huge, uh, amount that costs then?
You know, that, that generally has, has their input. I think, uh, for the most part, when I'm referencing the big cost of replacement, we're talking about the rollout cycle, replacing for generally sixth graders, ninth graders, uh, as that turns over, we're talking.
Yeah, that kind of adjusted or three or four-year replacement rate. Um, because we've, we've learned that keeping devices beyond that, that window, we end up spending more just to maintain the device as opposed to the replacement. But that's the, that's the cycle reference there.
And, and again, I, I wanna share with my colleagues and also the public something, I had a conversation with staff, I think it was what, ten days ago, related to health insurance. Um, we're seeing health insurance premiums, I think our Medicare premiums went up, I think, set twelve to seventeen percent depending upon who you're with. And we're gonna see a very similar increase with, um, health insurance providers across the nation. That's, that's my day job. I did make a recommendation to staff and I want to share with my colleagues. Um, I'm curious how many of our employees, um, have access to federal health insurance? For example, are military families accessing TRICARE instead of our healthcare plan? Um, I think it would be a good thing for us to at least remind them that they have access to that health plan as opposed to ours. Generally speaking, those DOD health plans are much cheaper. Like I pay sixty-two dollars a month for healthcare. It's heavily subsidized by the federal government. But if we encourage our employees to, instead of taking our health insurance, they take their military insurance, that would mitigate and minimize our exposure to risk with regards to health, health insurance claims. Um, but I did recommend to staff that they at least investigate that with HR. Uh, because if we can get, you know, one thousand, you know, seven hundred employees off of our health plan and using the government health plan and with TRICARE, we could see some savings with regards and some risk exposure to health insurance, uh, costs. So, um, I don't know if you've had a chance to talk about that, Dr. McCabe, and, and investigate that, but is that something that you guys are looking into?
It's something that we, it's something that we always offer our, um, employees each year. Not many of them take us up on it. Um, you did mention it, so it's something that we, we will discuss internally in cabinet. It's not something that we have discussed yet.
Okay. We, um, let me say this first. We're, we're probably bridging into a bit of a collective bargaining conversation. So the, this might be, um, these might be data that we bring to the board in a, in a closed session as opposed to an open session. Um, we, we do have data, obviously, we would have data on, um, the number of employees and retirees, the number who, who are enrolled and who, and who are not enrolled. Historically, we had programs in the collective bargaining agreements with some, if not all of the bargaining units to, um, theoretically incentivize people to not take our, our, um, healthcare plan. Uh, here's, you know, a subsidy to not join. So we have some historical data on that and how many still remain. Um, in terms of the specific question about, um, knowing whether or not any, any, in, single employer, how many employees would have access to a government plan, I, I think we'd have to survey that. And I haven't had a chance to speak to any of the employee groups about, you know, that kind of a, of a process. But we do have some preliminary data. Haven't even had a chance to share it with superintendent just yet, but I think that would be something that Mr. Omeley might present in a closed session coming up.
Yeah, I just want the public to know that we're doing everything we can to cut operating costs and to make sure that everything we do here is the most cost-efficient, uh, way we can do business. But I appreciate you looking at that because again, um, health, I'm concerned about the rising cost of health insurance, um, and the claims that our school system could be subjected to. Um, we saw a big hit in health insurance claims, what, last year? Year before, I think?
Two years, yeah.
Two years ago. So just trying to make sure we're not surprised by that. But that's a big concern I have as a board member is the, the cost that we might incur going forward with health insurance.
Okay, that's a good lead in to, uh, this is another slide from our adopted fiscal year twenty-six budget. Just kind of wanted to show a visual for, uh, this kind of ties into the, the background and the context that we talked about. Where are the dollars spent in our budget? Uh, you can see more than three quarters, seventy-seven point six percent directly in instruction. So that's salaries, benefits, that's your special ed, that's your, uh, supplies for instruction. So the money going to what our core mission is, is what we want to see. Uh, you know, break down a few of the other areas. So sort of the capital and, and plant maintenance and operations, kind of the running of the school facilities, uh, represents just under twelve percent of the budget. Um, transportation you see at six point two. So again, large, you know, operating cost for us to maintain and run the system. And you see administration at two percent. So, um, you know, I don't have comparatives, but lean in reference to the, the, the years of reductions we made to make sure we're operating lean. So this is kind of where we look to say, are the dollars going where we want the most impact? And, uh, and where's the flexibility? And, and a lot of that's been, um, you know, as we talked about, kind of reduced over the years.
These also, on, on the whole, including the sub-breakout for instruction, these are the so-called major categories. So, um, you know, if you take that little group and all of the others historically, and even after blueprint, we still have to organize our budget under these so-called major categories. Um, and now with blueprint, we also have to present our budget based on blueprint programs and at the school level. So the, the, the state's really good about when they pass a new law, they, they rarely take away the old law. Um, and I know that, you know, to some degree, that adds to confusion of the public cause the budget lays out based on these major categories, which it is still required to, to be that organized that way. But then we have to report and show the budget in, in the blueprint program way that we kind of referenced earlier.
So just, uh, to update, I think we've brought this earlier, but where we are snapshot fund balance at year end, uh, for fiscal year twenty-five at seven point two million, about one point seven percent. So within our allowable range, the board policy, uh, establishes a range between one and five percent. Uh, I'd say this is a little on the lower side of our goal or our, our past experience. We usually like to be closer to the midpoint in the two and a half or three percent range. So, uh, that would generally put our goal in the twelve to thirteen million dollar range. So a little low there, but, uh, offers some flexibility. Um, but, but maybe not what we've seen over the past several years.
This also reflects, and we've talked about this a little bit at the last couple of meetings. This reflected in here is another pressure on the operating budget, which is maintenance of, of schools or maintenance of plants. So when Dr. McCabe read through the history of cuts, there were a few years there where it was sort of abundantly clear and then others where it was sort of grouped as central office budget cuts. But along the way, we, we stripped out somewhere around two million or more from Mr. Procop's maintenance budget. And on the prior chart, you could see the maintenance was a very small percentage of budget, like two point one percent. Um, what, what we, meaning the boards of ed at the time, the superintendent at the time, it started with Mr. Guthrie in his last year and has continued forward through Dr. Lockard and its tenure and, and now Dr. McCabe's. What we said we would try to do so that Ray could still maintain our, our plants or our facilities was we would begin to transfer periodically fund balance from the board's fund balance to a local capital project account called the local infrastructure renewal account. Um, somewhere, uh, across those years, the board of ed periodically has transferred something like eleven millions, I think it's above eleven million cumulatively into that local project account. We have pretty much exhausted that project account in this fiscal year. And now we have fund balance at a place where we, we really wouldn't make a recommendation to you that you, that you go lower than where you are until it can rebuild for a couple of years. So we've, we've got a bit of a conundrum there. We took a, an approach, and, and by the way, even if you go back to Steve's, Mr. Guthrie's last budget, it was sort of like, this is an interim measure until we can eventually repopulate the maintenance budget, which we were never able to do. So we have a bit of a conundrum right now because we've been maintaining our facilities in a way that should be operating budget by moving fund balance into a capital account. And now we've exhausted that capital account without a place to go to repopulate it. So, um, that's its own little singular item that we're gonna be discussing a lot this winter with you.
Oh, that was because of emergency situations we came up with.
Yeah, I mean, Ray has done a really great job of trying to be planful and, and map out what he can do in a given year and come to me and in the past, Mr. Hart lover, now Mr. Burke to say, hey, I think next year you need to repopulate that. And not to blame a single thing, but the two light pole situations was kind of the unexpected thing this year that, that's gonna draw that account down by end of fiscal year to a place where we've got to figure out, what are we gonna do in fiscal twenty-seven to maintain the facility? So we.
Some of that was from Westminster High facade, correct?
Bricks, yeah. I mean, it's all of the things. Those are some big items, but it's, you know, that's the way we've, um, you know, that's the way we've run the system since fiscal eighteen, I believe, was the, it was progressive, but that, or gradual, but that was kind of like the final cut where we took all of the money from Ray. So if two million's right, you, you go back in time and you say, well, if we hadn't cut it, there, there would have been something like twenty-some million for Ray to have worked with. We were able to offset it with eleven million of transfers over time. But now we're at a place where we gotta figure out, okay, what are we gonna do next year? Cause we don't really have this as an option right now. So that's minor in the grand scheme of everything we're, we're gonna have to sort through. But there's probably like a million dollars there to, to also figure out as its own item.
So I know sometimes we do hear from the public like, why don't you tap into the emergency and don't put aside money for that? But having that was a, a perfect example when it came to the stadium lights. Otherwise, we would have had two high schools that would have had no night games.
Correct.
You know, so I mean, it's, it's important and we do have that in the event that an emergency situation comes up.
Absolutely, yeah. We have been tapping into that regularly for a long period of time now.
Yeah, right now we're six million below where we really want to be for fund balance. Um, I'm looking forward to hearing your plan on, is it a, is it a ten-year plan to get back to that six million? Is it a twelve-year plan? But we also have to realize that budgets are going up, right? I mean, several, several percentage a year they're going up. Um, which means we gotta put more than that cause you have a percentage of that percentage increase to put in there as well. Um, but yeah, looking forward to hearing your plan. And we as a board need to really decide whether it needs to be quicker or slower. Um, cause there are some really big unknowns ahead. And I'm talking, um, um, legislation in Annapolis. You know, what if they implement a requirement for electric buses? That's gonna increase our cost for transportation. What if, there's a lot of what-ifs they could, they could do down there in Annapolis over the, over the coming years. And we've traditionally used fund balance to kind of help us get there. And if we don't have a robust fund balance, we're in trouble. So just, you know, what, whatever that, whatever that, you know, matters for folks.
I hope they don't put electric buses as a mandate cause in Carroll County it would not work.
Yeah, well, that's, there's a lot of momentum. But those are the kinds of things I'm worried about. I'm worried about those kinds. Yeah. Well, that's, there's a lot of momentum. But those are the kinds of things I'm worried about. I'm worried about those kinds of legislative things being pushed down on us that we won't have a, a robust fund balance to help us get there slowly. And again, we, you know, our county doesn't need the shock of additional millions needed because of legislative actions in Annapolis or, or our inability to have a, a good enough fund balance to get us there slower.
And I think, Steve, again, around the state, other boards have shared the same concern about the transportation situation and the whole idea of, you know, electric buses. I mean, certainly would put a drain on everyone's budget. So we're not in favor of it certainly at this point.
They, they actually did mandate it, but there's a waiver process. And so it, where we are today with technology and how we run our transportation operation, and that's different by county, and that's not meant to disparage another county. Counties are different, the geography of each county, there's many, many differences. But we get a lot out of a single bus throughout a day. The number of trips it makes, how far it goes, our topography maybe versus another place. We, we don't believe that technology is there to pull that off without more buses on the road. We don't have the workforce for that and we don't have the infrastructure for that. And so I think right now we're in the waiver range. And I think that also the demand hasn't been able to be met. I believe Montgomery County recently, in the last year or two, ordered a bunch of diesel buses just to fill the void suddenly. And, and they're a place more, it's a little bit easier for, for a place like Montgomery to deploy an electric bus fleet. The, the density, that, you know, that, the infrastructure, that sort of thing. But yeah, there's always something. If it's not that, it'll be seat belts on buses, which I,
We've talked about that too.
Would be my guess. That will happen probably this year.
Dr. Dorsey and I, we, we hear it all, don't we, on our legislative meetings?
And Montgomery County has faced a lot of complexities and, and issues with the electric buses. So the parts and everything that they can't get them. Yeah.
Okay. Just to wrap up, looking forward, what's to come? Board meeting December tenth. We'll, we'll update anything we know at that time as we work toward the second board work session on December seventeenth. Again, we should, we should have more details on estimates for both revenues and expenditures and, you know, a better idea of where we are to balance the budget and, and what some ideas to do that would look like as we head toward January meeting where we would hope to roll out the superintendent's proposed budget and put that out for discussion and public hearing over the following month as we head toward board approval in February and it due to the county by March one. So, you know, the train will keep rolling. We need to work through it as we go. Hopefully, we'll have more information. Unfortunately, as you know, we'll never, we'll never know all the information as we work through it. So that's the near term coming up. And with that, we'll open it for anything else.
Questions?
No, I just know, honestly, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I really appreciate the staff's work on this. I, I know this is always, you know, a crazy ordeal every year, not knowing what the, the governor's going to roll out in, in his budget, playing guesswork with what's going to happen in the legislative climate down there that, what will or won't survive. And, but again, I just appreciate the hard work of everybody doing this. And, but we do have some very trying and challenging times ahead. There's no question. And it's going to be an interesting evolution between now and, and February. But thanks for your, thanks for your efforts, Dr. McCabe.
I was just going to say, I think we just need to make sure we remind ourselves that, you know, our job is to make sure our students and our staff have everything that they need. And if we can get a little bit more amazing because of everything that our staff does and the hard work that they do. So I think we just need to remind ourselves that we need to do what we need to do and ask for what we need to make sure that we keep our school system the best in the state. As our numbers continue to show that, we, we don't have much, but we make it work. Well, we need to make sure we can make it work with asking for a little bit more if we possibly can. So I appreciate everything that you guys are doing. Thank you. All right. Thank you.